During the department head meeting yesterday, we had a discussion to let all of the directors and managers know that at these meetings after concluding their agenda item, that they should feel free to leave the meeting if they have other business to attend to. Obviously, they're welcome to stay if they find value in that, but we just want the public to know that we're not requiring the directors and department heads to stay for the duration of the meeting. Whatever they deem to be the most effective and efficient for them in their role is what we'd like them to do. So we just want the public to know that that's our intent, and so please understand if folks are leaving after their agenda item in the middle of the meeting, they're not being rude and dismissive. They're simply moving on with their business for the day.
Which is your business of the day. So with that, at this time, we will entertain a motion to adopt the order of the agenda, and I would ask that we consider removing the HR weekly report. If the board remembers, we agreed that they didn't have to do it weekly, and I did send that email, and so we could consider before adopting that we remove that one.
All right, I make a motion to accept the order of agenda as amended.
Seconded?
I didn't actually amend it. I just gave a comment on it.
You want to make that motion, Commissioner?
I just made the comment that, could we consider removing it?
I did.
I'll make a motion. I move to amend the order of agenda to remove the Human Resources weekly report.
There you go. Now, do you want to second that?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion from the public on removing that? Public comment? Seeing none, any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
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 All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended order of the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the amended order of agenda.
There we go.
Seconded?
Motion and a second. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Corn? Yes.
All right. Next up is our consent agenda. There's actually, we have some confidential items from the sheriff. One item is $9,275.60. Another item, $84,211. Technology has a $5,312.47 with Risk having some, a claim for $5,258.71 in that consent agenda. Any questions from the board on the consent agenda before we entertain a motion? Because you were, I think, when you do that, are you asking?
I am. I'm moving so you see that I have a comment. I just wanted to let everyone know that I was curious about the auto body cost for that patrol vehicle that was involved in that pit maneuver, and so I checked in with Risk to find out if a patrol vehicle is equipped with a pit bumper. Then, we don't have a lot of history, but it seems that there's a lot less likelihood of damage occurring to the patrol vehicle. This vehicle did not have one of those special bumpers, which is why this much damage occurred. And so apparently, there may be a future opportunity for Risk to see whether or not the sheriff's office is interested in having more of those pit bumpers added to additional vehicles so that as they need to use those maneuvers in the future, hopefully, there'd be less risk and cost involved. The cost of a new bumper was less than $500, so about 1/10th the cost of repair damage in this one case. I know it's not always going to be consistent and predictable, but it might just be a good investment. So I'll ask Risk to coordinate with the sheriff to see if the sheriff is interested in considering that for other vehicles so that we might be able to reduce this potential cost in the future.
I had the same concern myself, and in my opinion, the, if you're not equipped to do a certain thing, then you probably should not be doing it, such as that vehicle probably should not be doing a pit maneuver.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know what their policies are on that, but.
I just, I think we have a fairly low-cost option to equip the vehicles in a way that would reduce damage in the future, or reduce the likelihood of damage in any case when they need to use those maneuvers. So in any, I think there's a potential opportunity there to reduce future risk of cost of repair work, so.
On that one, Christian's online. I have the question of, does the person who we had to do the pit remover on, if they have insurance, do we get to claim against their insurance for that? That was a question I had on that.
Yes, just quick comments. The pit maneuver, it's been pretty infrequent. I think over the last five, six years, we've had three claims because of it. The one with the bumper, the special bumper, had no damage, and one without the bumper had damage, and one without the bumper had very minor damage based on how soft they can hit it. But yes, usually for claims involving a suspect that they have to pay it, or even other damage, we refer those to the prosecutor's office for restitution. We try to get money back from that person that was arrested to pay for the damage.
So I'm asking about there, if the person had car insurance, do we get to claim against that?
Um.
Can we look into that?
Look at that, definitely. That's a good idea, because what I just do is refer, like I said, for prosecutor's office to get that back that way. That's a, that's a good idea. I can look into that.
Yeah. So I, I'd just like to not have to pay for it if we don't have to. I'm sorry.
We both have understood in several ways that insurance does not cover you if you're doing something in the commission of the prime, including auto insurance. Evading a police officer is criminal. Insurance is not covered.
So.
Possibly.
It is possible, but it's also possible that they cover it. And so I want to say I checked off my possibilities. All right?
It's possible.
Yeah. All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded?
All right. Any comment from the public on the consent agenda with Mr. Lady? And so the, I want us to remember the questions when we're doing the agenda items, it's the agenda item, not moving into a conversation about something other than that item, okay?
Correct.
Mr. Lady?
Good morning. So my question or my comment?
First name and Bonner County resident.
Sure. Jim Lady, not a Bonner County resident. So my, my question would be, $84,000 for one agency to claim without the public having any idea what that amount of money is being used for seems a bit sketchy, and the public should probably have at least some understanding why an agency is requesting so much money and keeping it secret. Is there any way that the public can be informed to a point of what the money's being used for? Being able to say something about it is better than nothing about it, and there seems to be no reason why that amount of money can't be explained in some way for the public to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, this is Doug Patterson for the record, and I am a Bonner County resident still. So this has been going on that if you could, you know, quickly give us a total of what the sheriff's, all, all of his things seem to be confidential these days, and, and this just keeps, and I would agree with the last commenter that they could at least give us some idea whether this is, this is communications equipment or, or something in terms of, this is an immense amount of money that essentially is not getting looked at. That's all.
So I hear both of you guys, and I understand that comment. So I want to clarify, the board can see what it was. What I think on this one is we should, Bill Wilson is online. I don't want to comment on what the items are since it was given to us as confidential, but what I want to do is allow Bill, if he can chime in, as to whether or not I can say what these items vaguely are since it came in as confidential. And by vaguely, I'm going to be specific to the regarding, the, when you look at the memos that came over from the sheriff, can I read the regarding line out? Because I'm reading it off of the confidential form that I get. Can I read the regarding line?
So Asia and Les, and by, first of all, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, I'm not comfortable giving you that, giving you an opinion that you could do that right now.
Okay.
Because it's just in the moment. For future reference, if we want to address our policy to account for these concerns, to give some level of detail without, you know, basically giving away the most confidential information, I think that's a great conversation to have, but probably not one that we want to make just from the hip in the middle of a meeting.
No worries. Thank you. And so we will address that concern at the next business meeting, but your point is well taken from both Mr. Patterson and Mr. Lady. Any further public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any discussion from the board on the consent agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is Clerk Rosedale.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. The stands are full. Before you, Commissioners, I have FY25 claims batch number 17 totaling $513,432.44. And the biggest claim out of that is for health insurance, about $116,000, and that's between medical and pharmacy. The rest are all $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 size.
A good amount to road and bridge throughout, with some things to solid waste.
Yep.
So, at this time, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY25 claims in batch number 17 totaling $513,432.44.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. And we will go straight to Mr. Patterson. Please state your name and Bonner County resident.
Doug Patterson. Yes, I am a Bonner County resident, and I just really wanted to thank Mike for his ongoing, when he gets up there and talks about these things, he usually answers my question very early in terms of what the big items are, and, and so everybody would know them. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion passes. Thank you, Clerk Rosedale. Road and Bridge.
Good morning. Matt Mulder, staff engineer for the Road and Bridge Department, for the record. In 2022, Road and Bridge applied for a safety grant project to address Spirit Lake Cut Off Road and all of the sharp 90-degree corners that we have on that road. We've had quite a few fatal accidents, serious accidents, and, you know, untold numbers of property damage from cars taking these corners, which are not suitable for the 45-mile-per-hour speed limit along the road, and leaving the roadway, and hitting trees and, and other things. We've had, our own dump trucks have been struck by cars who have gone over the center line in slippery conditions, and just a couple weeks ago, we had a new fatality at one of these 90-degree corners. So this continues to be an issue. We've got, we were selected for funding for this grant program to the tune of $1.5 million in funding on what we expect to be just over a $2 million project. And as JUB Engineers has been working on the design for addressing some of these curves, adding guardrail, and in the worst case, the, the 90-degree corner near Bear Road, which is suitable for like 15 mile-per-hour as it currently sits, we're wanting to realign that curve and make it appropriate for a 45-mile-per-hour speed limit around that curve. So in order to accommodate that, it will require buying additional right-of-way from two property owners on the inside of the corner. And they, JUB has prepared the right-of-way documents for this project and is ready to move forward with that. So before us today is a professional services agreement with Negotiation Services LLC to do the right-of-way negotiation, appraisals, prepare purchase documents, and everything else associated with negotiating with these property owners to get fair compensation in respectful ways to try and pursue this additional right-of-way that we need for this project, with the hope that this doesn't need to go to any kind of eminent domain taking, but can be done with fair compensation to all the parties involved. So this agreement is in the, a fixed fee of $20,500 to do all of this work.
Do we have any idea of whether or not the property owners are agreeable to what's happening on that?
Jason Top has had an in-person meeting with the property owner that is most seriously impacted, and the takeaway from that was that he would be willing to work with us moving forward. So we have high hopes to, that that will be the case.
I always hate what has happened, but it's better when people are agreeable.
So do you have a number of how many 90-degree corners there are out there?
There are only two 90-degree corners. There's several other corners that are less than 90 degrees.
And this is going to reroute one of the two?
Yes, the, the sharpest of the two.
Is the other, second one being looked at?
It's being looked at for other improvements, increased signage and potentially guardrail, but not a realignment. The other one can be taken at 45 miles per hour, though, maybe less comfortably, so depending on your vehicle.
Okay. Because my only concerns, it's great, and it needs to be worked on, and we need to work towards improving that, but the guardrail only protects the outside lane. It doesn't protect the inside lane from going into the outside lane, such as your dump truck's situation, right?
Yeah.
So how do we prevent or try and negotiate that from happening more and more?
Yeah.
Even though we're throwing a million-plus bucks at it?
Right. I mean, the best answer is you would realign that corner as well to make it more appropriate. We were already exceeding the maximum grant award with just doing one corner. So, you know, potentially, that would need to wait for an additional grant funding opportunity later down the road.
Okay.
Or, or we, you know, pay for a much, much more of it out of Bonner County's pockets.
Right. I would just like to keep that on the radar.
Yeah.
Because that, those are some nasty terms.
And Director Top did, they did work through and identify this because a lot of people on Spirit Lake Cut Off call in about the speed with an increased request that the sheriff's office also take tours on that road, and so they do have those on their radar list of repairs. But the decision was to fix the sharpest curve that was there. Any further questions from the board?
That's all I have.
From a funding perspective, if this were to move forward, if we have, you know, good negotiations with the purchase of additional right-of-way, is the current approved budget for this 002-9,000 budget, do we have the funds already allocated for the matching portion, and whatever we assume the reasonable cost of the purchase of the right-of-way would be?
We've got, yes, I think, this may be a question for Jason, and I'm shooting from the hip here, but I think we have over $600,000 in our grant match, and I think that that is largely for this project.
Okay.
But I can't say that with 100% certainty without looking at it right now.
It states there's just short of $695,000, but I wasn't sure if there were other projects that would be included in that budget line item.
Jason covered this project, noting also that what we have to pay will come out of this fiscal year, our portion of it, because we are going to exceed what the grant itself was.
Yeah, it was good to see that there was already a budget line item in anticipation of this project.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure if the amount was solely dedicated to this project.
Yeah, we have a big Excel spreadsheet that we track, all these different grant programs, and all the different years where all these different funding obligations are going to be due, and it's something we look at every budget cycle as, okay, you know, which, which amounts are going to be due from which programs this year, and we put that into our proposed budget, so.
You're getting that question probably also because yours does say email attached of the conversation with auditing, and, but it didn't actually get attached to our packet.
Ah, okay.
So that's probably why you're getting it. So it's, but you, you did check all the boxes there. So, all right. Any further questions from the board to Matt? At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve this professional services agreement in the amount of $20,500 with Negotiation Services LLC for the Spirit Lake Cut Off Curves Project.
There's a motion, is seconded.
Seconded.
Any discussion from the community on this item? Seeing none, any further discussion from the board?
None.
Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Back to you, Matt.
Okay. Item number two is also dealing with right-of-way. In December 2022, Idaho Transportation Department finished up construction of their Granite North project from the bottom of Granite Hill up to Trails End Road, including constructing the frontage roads for that project, which they turned over to Bonner County for maintenance in December of 2022. And so we've been maintaining those roads for the last two years now, and as ITD has completed all of the paperwork and wrapped up their project, they are now ready to transfer the right-of-way for those frontage roads to Bonner County as well. So before you today is a right-of-way package with deeds and things that need Commissioner's signatures in order to accept ownership of the right-of-way for these roads, Mineral Ridge Road and Vintage Road, that the county's been maintaining for the last two years, and we recommend accepting that.
I had a question more on, for the future people that sit in Road and Bridge and the board. When you come to the last paragraph where it addresses the fact that the word, the name of the road has gone back and forth, have we done a good job of clearly documenting so that people can find what has happened with this? Because that seemed like, you guys clearly said, we did our best to try to fix this, but this is what we are going to end up with. But my, I wanted to make sure that we specifically addressed, was there nothing else we could have done? And part of the document is referencing a, it's specific to a road, but the name is going back and forth.
Right. Vintage, so Vintage 95 Road was the name that was floated early on as ITD was planning to just give us the existing highway and make that the frontage road. So we were going to call it Vintage 95 Road. And as the design of the corridor continued to evolve, and they ended up just building new frontage roads and building the new freeway on top of where the old highway was, that idea went away. And so we've, we renamed it just Vintage Road and dropped the 95. But repeatedly on documents, it still seems to show up that Vintage 95 is still showing here and there, and it's, and these deeds, it's only in half of the places is it called Vintage 95, and in other places, it's called Vintage Road. So that's why I added it to my memo, just as part of the record, you know, for anybody trying to find out some clarity in the future where, what, what happened here.
I think my confusion, my concern came also from the second sentence where it says, but they no longer correlate to where the original highway was routed. And so we didn't give markers for the road, we just used the words. And so, so if it doesn't correlate, did we do a good job documenting it? That was the only thing that caught my eye on it was, we're saying this is what we can work with, but making sure.
Yeah. And road names change over the years, all throughout the county. Roads get platted with a certain name, and it gets changed for one reason or another. So I, I don't think that's a super big issue. The, the right-of-way, it doesn't have a name associated with it, so.
But the correlation of the road is different, though.
Well, the, all of the document, it's just the name. They've, they've referencing an old version of the name in places in some of the documents, but the, the official road name is Vintage Road.
Okay.
So all of our county documents going forward, the GIS layer, all of that will have the proper name?
It already does.
Proper alignment?
Yeah.
Okay. And I also wanted to confirm that even though they were built by the state DOT, which should provide an affirmative answer, I wanted to verify that you're understanding that these roads have been built to meet or exceed county standards?
In most ways. There, there was some negotiation early on about widths, such as shoulder widths required and stuff that do not entirely meet our standards, whereas they were trying to save funding and make this fit into the project. But the, the section widths of how thick the asphalt is and the underlaying gravel layers, all of that exceeds our standards.
So from a durability and lifespan maintenance perspective, they exceed our standards?
Yeah.
So our, our future financial involvement is a good starting position, right, from a maintenance perspective?
Right. I don't expect any major repairs and reconstruction needed on these roads in our lifetime.
I understand we have limited negotiating capability with the state when it comes to some of the other conditions, but it's, it's good to hear that it's a good, good acceptance of a investment for our maintenance going forward.
Yeah.
Any further questions from the board?
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Commissioners sign the quick claim, the transferring ownership of Mineral Ridge Road and Vintage Road public right-of-ways to Bonner County.
Seconded.
All right. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing Jennifer Kramer.
Good morning, Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident. I'm just curious, when you guys were talking about the renaming of roads, perhaps it would be worthwhile to keep like a cross-reference, you know, just an Excel spreadsheet or something that says, you know, this road was this name, and now it changed to this name on this date, and so somebody could, could track the history of a road? Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Corn?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Shuck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. Dave Shook, Bonner County Airports Manager, for the record. I have one item for you today. It is renewal of a maintenance contract for navigational aids at Sandpoint Airport. The navigational aids are, this, I'm sorry, this contract is for one year from January 1st to December 31st. FAA regulations require a maintenance program for our ground-based navigational aids, which include the Automated Weather Observation System. The contract is in the amount of $6,400 and is accounted for in the airport's budget. I would like to mention that this last summer, 2024, the FAA decommissioned two of our ground-based navigational aids, which is a benefit to the airport in the form that this maintenance contract previously amounted to about $30,000 per year, and now we are down to $6,400 per year with the decommissioning of those two navigational aids. This didn't change, the decommissioning did not change our ability to fly into our airports. The FAA is going to more space-based and GPS-based approaches to airports, and the system that we had that was decommissioned was obsolete and, you know, no longer in service due to changes made to other portions of the airspace system. So this is a significant annual savings for our budgets for airports, and I recommend entering into this agreement. Auditing, Risk, and Legal have approved the agreement.
Thank you. All right. Any questions from?
Director Shuck, could you please just explain to us, since it's noted here, what an automated weather observation system is, what, how it helps with safety and how it's used?
Certainly. All around Bonner County, there are weather stations that report the conditions that you see through the news media and weather media about what is happening currently and weather around the county. We have one of those systems based at the airport, at Sandpoint Airport, and it communicates the weather, current weather information into the National Weather System, but it also broadcasts that information to pilots flying into the area through a low amplitude radio system. You can't hear the weather broadcast more than about 10 miles away from the airport, but it gives the pilots real-time information about what the weather conditions are on the airport. That is one of the most beneficial navigational aids that you could have at an airport to understand the weather conditions right at the moment, and is, is very valuable, valuable to us and the pilot flying community.
Thank you for that description.
Anything else? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to enter into this maintenance agreement, and that the Chairwoman sign administratively.
Seconded.
All right. Any questions from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none, any further deliberation by the board? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Motion passes. Up next is planning.
Jacobell Planning Director filling in for Mr. Phan. We have a final plat for subdivision file S0003-21, Sundance Acres. So this is a, like I said, it's a full subdivision. Those proved back in 2021. So this is a, like I said, it's a full subdivision, those proved back in 2021. It's approximately 20 or 42.5 acres of unplatted land. It's being platted into 13 residential lots ranging from two and a half to 8.43 acres. The site's zone recreation and has a land use designation of resort community. The internal roads are, have been approved and they're to be publicly owned and privately maintained by the homeowners association. Subdivision was approved by the Board of County Commissioners at a public hearing in November of 2021. And then last October, or sorry, October 25th or 23rd, the Board approved an extension for this project. So the new expiration on this plat is November 11th, 2025. The subject property is located within a portion of Section 10 Township 59 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian, Bonner County. Conditions of approval for this file have been complete. Notes and easements required on the plat are shown on the final plat. Staff recommends approval of this project as presented.
All right. Any questions from the board to Director Jacobell?
None.
We'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the final plat of Sundance Acres, planning file number S 0003-21, and authorize the Chair to sign the final plat.
Seconded.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, any deliberation from the board? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
But before we go, we have to make sure we compliment our Ms. Brown. It's, inasmuch as we do, we get a lot of comments from the public on things, when people write in to give a compliment about staff and the good job that they're doing, it's beneficial to the organization, but also to the Director to hear. She got a very good compliment from a member of the public who's been very involved in planning and zoning hearings, championing how good of a job she did at not just customer service, but communicating at a level that was easy to understand. So thank you to Jennifer, her hard work in making sure she does good customer service because she's the gatekeeper of that office. And that was a, it was a huge benefit to wake up and see a really nice comment in a world when we're going through comp plan amendments and it's huge for that department to get something. So I want to make sure we recognize that. Members of the community don't just call and tell us what they don't like, they also take time to tell us what they do like. And they really thought she did a good job of customer service. So thank you to her for that.
I think we have a four-star review on, on Google, so.
There you go.
Just saying.
Thank you, Director. All right. Justice Services.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services for the Record. Just one item this morning. I have a memorandum of agreement between Bonner County for the assignment of Robert Palmquist, excuse me, with Robobim Prea Auditing LLC to conduct a Prea audit for Bonner County Juvenile Detention. Prea is an acronym for the Prison Rape Elimination Act of 2003, which George W. Bush signed into federal law at that time. And basically what it is for is to require a zero tolerance of any type of sexual abuse or sexual activity inside jails and prisons and juvenile correction and juvenile detention facilities. And it's just, there's over 100 and some standards that we have to meet and have policy to address to make sure that we're, that we're doing everything we possibly can to prevent any type of sexual contact. And that would be between staff on resident or resident on resident. And so every three years, we have to be audited by a certified auditor from the Department of Justice. They don't actually work with the Department of Justice, but they are certified through them to conduct these audits. And so our last audit was in 2022, so that means we're due for our fourth ever Prea audit. So this is, just outlines the agreement with him. He has put a cost on there and it will likely come in a little less than what he has quoted, but we just want to make sure that we have enough to pay it approved. It'd be around, well, the quote is for $6,000 to do that audit.
Do you want to say your record? Your audit record is clean, isn't it?
Well, we're sort of, we're certified. Our last audit, we had a different auditor that we'd never used before, and she saw the standards a little bit different than the other auditor. So we did have a short corrective action that we had to do, but we completed that in short order and we were in compliance with all the standards.
It's always a good opportunity to tell the community how good you're doing over there.
Yes. And it's all online. The report is published and also I have to publish a letter every, every year, just basically to say if we've had any type of sexual abuse cases, any Prea incidents, which we did not have any last year. We have had some in the past, very, very few, and most of them were not founded. Usually it's silly kid stuff that doesn't fall within a Prea, a true Prea incident, but we have not had any type of sexual contact among staff on resident or resident on resident.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between Bonner County for the assignment of Robert Palmquist, Robobim Prea Auditing LLC to conduct Prea audit. This agreement sets forth the conditions under which Robert Palmquist will conduct a Prea audit for Bonner County at the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center during the 2025 to 2026 fiscal year pursuant to the Prison Rape Elimination Act's national standards as codified at 28 CRF 115, as set forth under Exhibit A to the agreement and has been approved by legal.
Seconded.
All right. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, any discussion from the board?
One other thing, it was, even though we had NA on here for auditing, auditing did submit an email that's at the back of the packet that did approve it as well, so. They were in Boise last week, so they didn't give the official approval, but she did respond with an approval through email.
Thank you. All right. Roll call vote. Yes.
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 All right. Director Howard.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Howard, Director of Solid Waste for the Record. Bonner County Solid Waste is seeking to update the Solid Waste Advisory Committee Resolution 19-34. The original resolution was approved on February 26, 2019. Solid Waste is requesting to add the, to add additional language, which is as follows. Section 1, Composition, added Section J, if a Commissioner District is unable to fill a position, the BOCC may appoint an applicant from another district to fill the vacancy in that district. And this has been run through, this was approved by Bill Wilson, so.
I've got a, maybe I'll just wait till, kind of a suggestion kind on this one, instead of just the board selecting someone, but we've kind of done one where we've usually said, let's run it for an additional period. And then if after one redo, then we did it versus just nobody applied, because we only, that's kind of my thought is to give that opportunity to have it close, come back and say, look, nobody applied from this district. If you don't apply, your district isn't going to be represented within your district. That's my only thought on it, because the, the reason we want them from a district is so that there's that local contact in that area. And I completely understand the problem on Solid Waste is that we just don't get people applying. But I also don't want to, I want to do a, a good job of putting the onus on the public to volunteer, but us not doing a quick, we applied, we posted, you didn't apply, so we're just selecting. What do you think about that?
So maybe after the second advertisement of an applicant, then the Board of County Commissioners has the opportunity to appoint someone from another district.
That was my first blush on it when I read that was I, because I know we've done, like, that's what we just did with, with all of them. We've said, we didn't get enough, we want to do more, or we didn't get what we're looking for, I want to do more. I don't want to, I want it to be clear that we're wanting the person from that area, but in the absence of that, because anyhow.
So the way you have it reworded, it looks like on J, it says, if a Commissioner District is unable to fill a position, the BOCC may appoint an applicant from another district to fill the vacancy in that district.
Correct.
So I, I don't, I'm not sure that, it doesn't say after just running one.
Right. It leaves it open.
I, I think, I don't know if we have to change the wording in this, but I think that we need to fully understand that we should obviously open it up again for a second run.
The way, the way it gets posted is that the application ends up on this date. And so that would give the board the option of just saying, it opened, it closed, select, versus a very clear direction that says, we didn't just open and close it, we opened, it closed, and then we said, look, nobody applied from District 1, we're looking for a District 1 Commissioner to sit on Solid Waste. I don't, it is, it gives you the opportunity, but if I'm a questioning taxpayer, I want it to know that I'm going to get it, that second run versus the first run, because you're technically done after your first run on all of these unless it, unless the board chooses the way we have chosen, which has been, let's run it again. That, that was my thought on it, because this one is going outside of the Commissioner District. It's not just filling the seat, you're going outside of the district to fill the seat. And that is a little bit, and I'm going to say Veronica came in here because she had a comment on this one. What? Okay. Oh.
So, I mean, if we just add after, after a second advertisement or something of that nature to what's here, would that be appropriate?
That's my, I would, I would be agreeable to that if that was in there, because I want to be able to go back, if it's in my district, I want to be able to go back and say, you guys, if you don't pick one, you're not going to be represented. That's my thought.
I can add that.
Well, I'm not saying change it, I'm, I'm just.
I'm agreeable to making it clear that we would go out for a second advertisement.
So can we make that change, amend it right now and then vote on it?
Mm-hmm. This was just his suggestion.
The resolution would need to be amended.
Yeah.
So we can just amend that.
Yeah. His item is on the, the agenda for action discussion decision, so we can make changes. And the reason to do, you want to just bring it back instead?
Well, I mean, you can, we can change it now and I'll just make the change in the resolution and then bring it back to your signature. Probably wouldn't do that.
The reason to have the discussion now is when we open it up for public comment, then the public can comment on that recommendation. But I believe he listed this as action discussion decision that lets us have the discussion about it. That's my kind of first blush on it, because I like, I think the community has, the fair is a perfect example. We did the fair and advertised and didn't get a lot of people. And then when we advertised that we didn't get a lot of people, we got, we, that's, I think, the largest fair applications we got, we got nine or 10 after we did a second run with a verbal push of, you guys didn't apply for it. And I want, I think we can do that, so. All right. At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Mr. Bowman.
Dave Bowman, Bonner County. So I was under the impression from, I don't remember, way, way months ago, that when you were going to have HR come on every week and give a report that openings on boards and commissions was going to be part of that report. And, and, and yet that got taken off the agenda today. And so even if you don't have HR do it, why not put as part of your weekly agenda for one of you to read off the openings that are, that, the vacancies that exist or the openings that are coming up on the various boards and commissions? I mean, it would take a minute or two, and they could all be announced every week in the business meeting, that gets lots of attention. And you might find, because this stuff's not, you, you, if you're going to find it on the county website, you got to go digging for it. And if, if, if you would make it easy for people to know, I think you'd have a lot better success.
Thank you. Any further public comment on the resolution to update the Solid Waste Committee?
I'm going to connect it loosely. I was just going to say, I was going to apply for the Fair Board, Jeff Armstrong, Bonner County resident, sorry. I was going to apply for the Fair Board, but the presumption kind of around here is that, that we already have our people picked, so I kind of didn't waste my time. I'm looking for something to do to kind of help out, because I know the volunteerism's a big thing and I, I don't need more to do. Trust me, I don't. But I would love to dabble in other things. So I think getting the word out, I think, you know, maybe email's great, other ways. I just wanted to throw that out there. That was my perception as I sat down and actually looked at it and was like, you know what? I'm going to go watch a show with my wife instead of tapping this out. So I think if we break down some of those barriers in perception, I think the new county board that is sitting here is going to change some of those opinions. But I think that was just kind of what was stuck in my head, is oh, there's probably somebody picked for this, so move on.
Thank you. So I will directly email you as we get stuff popping up.
You know, me, I have tons of free time.
Thank you for that input, too. And hopefully you saw that this board actually selected two very new people to our Fair Board, so we didn't pick from the same pool this time. All right. Well, at this time, we'll entertain a motion as it regards to the resolution to update.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-11 with the amended redefining the composition bylaws of the Bonner County Solid Waste Committee with the addition of Section J.
Can you state what the, yeah, the as amended part to?
And if a Commissioner District is unable to fill a position after a second advertising, the BOCC may appoint an applicant from another district to fill the vacancy in that district.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing done, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And then you'll just send it back to us to sign with that amendment? All right. You're here to be Bill. All right. This is the manager of the Commissioner's Office. She is excited to be here today.
Yes, I'm very excited. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm standing in for Bill Wilson today. I'm presenting a resolution for acceptance of a grant for VAST, Lilybrook Family Justice Center. This is, the Victims Advocate Services Team has received a grant from Inovia Foundation in the amount of $5,000. Before VAST may utilize these funds, the Board of County Commissioners must accept the funds. By opening the budget and allocating them appropriately, VAST will use these funds for assisting victims. The resolution itself is a budget adjustment for the unanticipated revenue for VAST.
Thank you. All right.
I have a question. I don't know Veronica if this is going to be.
Yeah, that's probably not very good, but I'll try.
So if you're unable to answer, it's very understandable and not, not detrimental. But what I was hoping Mr. Wilson would have been able to tell us was whether or not there would be any cost to administer this grant other than the annual reporting requirement. Are you aware of anything?
I'm not aware of that.
I didn't see anything that was outlined.
I didn't see it either in the documents.
So it looks really favorable, but I just wanted to confirm if Bill knew.
I apologize.
Because there's nothing outlined in the grant letter stating there would be other administrative costs, then it looks pretty reasonable.
I didn't see any other administrative or cost in that.
There isn't, and this is a regular one for them.
Because it looks like the annual reporting requirement is very minimal.
Yeah, that's why I think it's there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I will have that momentarily. Based on the information before us, I move for the board to approve Resolution Number 25-12, authorizing the receipt of unanticipated revenue in the amount of $5,000 for use as VAST in furtherance of its mission to support victims of violence in Bonner County.
Seconded.
All right. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, any deliberation by the board?
None.
All right, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, District 1.
Yes. Okay. So. Bear with me for one moment, please. Get to my notes.
It is, one person did give me a comment that, why don't we label the 1, 2, and 3 all the same and then our agenda items? Because it says it's something different, so.
We all have a slightly different perspective, I would say.
That's what was my response, was all we have to do is identify what we're going to talk about, but.
So just wanted to start with a brief announcement that the Board of County So, just wanted to start with a brief announcement that the Board of County Commissioners yesterday adopted the Agricultural Protection Area Ordinance. And you heard it mentioned earlier, but that was adopted as a three-member commission. And at this time, we've only had two applications come in to fill that commission. So we are looking for additional applicants. And so the Planning Department will be putting an advertisement back out for that commission for anyone who's interested. So please be looking for that and poke your friends and neighbors and let them know, especially those who are involved in agriculture or forestry, because those are prerequisites to sit on that commission. And then to highlight citizen communication that I've had over the past week, some of the items that have been brought forward to me that I'm looking into. For one, we have our Bonner County Ambulance District, ongoing questions about the status of what's happening with that from a financial and from a future planning perspective. I just wanted to highlight the fact that the next, excuse me, the next meeting for that is happening tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. in this room, I do believe. So please come to attend and offer your comment. And as we're looking to continue to make direction for the future of the ambulance district. Also, that the comprehensive plan map changes that are being proposed right now, there is the, two more opportunities to go to make comments and in-person communicate with members of the Planning Department staff and the Planning Commission. Starting at 3:00 today up at Priest Lake, there will be a workshop. And then back here for the final planned workshop next Tuesday in the first-floor conference room. So if you have not yet had a chance to attend one of those workshops, I recommend that you go, that you look and speak with folks, and then please offer your comments if you have any ideas or concerns. They all start at 3:00 p.m. A few of the topics that citizens have been contacting me about, that I'm communicating with them on and looking into, one is wildfire prevention, another has to do with railroad quiet zones. Also, follow-up on conversations we had recently on the board regarding snowmobile trail maintenance. Also having questions about agricultural and timber exemptions. Another item that has been discussed has been home occupation permits versus conditional use permits. And then also the airport hangar leases and how those are administered. And then when it comes to items that I will be, have focused on over the past week, the Idaho Association of Counties, training modules, materials, I was able to do that remotely. So I went through those materials last week to gain any additional insight that I could from those pieces of information that are available to us as a member of the Idaho Association of Counties. And I was spending quite a bit of time responding to public comments on those topics that we were just discussing. This coming week, the areas I plan to be focusing on are looking into some of the detailed comments that are coming in regarding the comprehensive plan map. We have comments in particular that are focusing on areas around Priest Lake and its shoreline, as well as the gravel pits throughout our county and how those are being looked at from a land use designation. So I'm receiving quite a few comments on those topics. I'll be looking into those further and doing more research on those, as well as trying to better understand the history of the formation of the ambulance district for our county and what that means for future planning decisions going forward. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I would like to see if anyone has any questions about any of the items I mentioned.
All right. Ongoing issues, concerns, and updates. So I'm still focusing on budget. That'll probably be my constant concern for, as we move forward. I did, I wanted to report out, some people asked about the nuclear waste by rail coming through Idaho. I did reach out to our Director Howard on a training to see if the rail system would also give us a presentation in terms of our emergency preparedness for Bonner County. Right now, the response we have is confirmation that we have not actually had any of that type of waste come over the rail, but we are still working on getting that set up for us to be knowledgeable of who are the first responders for that and what is the mitigation plan for something like that if that were to occur. So stay tuned for that. I'm going to keep giving that update because that's a valid issue that the community wanted to have addressed. Some litigation updates. I'm going to read this response from the Attorney General, but I'm going to preface it by saying, when I read it, I recognize that the question answered doesn't address the question that the public had as it pertains to the payment issued. So constituent complaint response from Bonner County towards Raul Labrador with respect to the $70,000 payment that was made. The question that was asked was surrounding ARPA, which is not the question that many members of the public had. So your answer comes as it pertains to ARPA. And so the Attorney General's response was that they reviewed the statute with their authority, and remember, they're looking at a constituent complaint from Bonner County Commissioner's misuse of ARPA funds to pay an employee as part of an agreement to avoid litigation. Their response was, under Idaho law, the primary duty of enforcing state criminal laws rests with Idaho's county sheriffs and county prosecutors. The Office of the Attorney General only has jurisdiction in criminal matters when statute specifically grants the Attorney General jurisdiction. And so they reviewed the complaint sent pursuant to Idaho Code 312002. The statute authorizes the Attorney General to conduct a preliminary investigation of any allegation of a violation of state criminal law against a county officer occupying an elective office for violation of state criminal law in this, in his official capacity. So the complaint was that, as it related to local fiscal recovery funds being spent. So the complaint you sent alleges the Bonner County Commissioners did this when they used the interest earned on ARPA funds to pay an employee as part of an agreement to avoid litigation. However, the interest on ARPA funds is not subject to the same requirements as ARPA funds themselves. And then they reference the U.S. Department of Treasury coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds frequently ask questions of what you can spend the interest on. I recognize that the question that people asked was, was the payment in itself appropriate to have been made, not just how it was made? That is not detailed in the answer. Seeing people sitting there, I did make some copies of people that might want that legal opinion. Other people did reach out to me on the litigation update, and I do have a, we have a meeting board scheduled to go over all our open cases. And so part of what I'll add on to this is saying, the matter, open or closed? We can't go over any detail on open cases, but some people are saying they just want to know what the status of the number of claims that Bonner County still has, which is, that part is open to public record. It's just what's in those, we can't say. And so I will be addressing that, but I'm also, we're going to go through a full update of our cases, especially as, as we have a new board. Workshops that we have that are pending, I also made copies of this for people that have an interest. Fair on Thursday, we are meeting with the Fair. They have, this is the first time they've given us a view of what their projections are for 2026. So we have a workshop. We also need to address them paying for their utilities. We haven't done that part yet either, now that they have a full board. So February the 6th at 1:00 p.m., it's titled as a special meeting with the BOCC and the Fair. So please chime into that if you want to see what their projection was. I printed a couple of those out here for you to have as a reference for that. I do have on mine to specifically address Mr. Bowman's comment about open boards. Human Resources wanted to not give a weekly report. I did put the discussion regarding open board commission positions, which boards have openings, as something to report out, because the goal is to get people to participate. And if it's requesting that they come from a certain area, that we do our due diligence to extract those persons. And so I did place that here. We were in conference last week, so I am getting back to people that emailed and called, so I have a lot of calls scheduled for this week. So thank you for your patience on that. With the conference that was attended, one of my biggest takeaways was AI is coming and Bonner County needs to be prepared for it with respect to policies, procedures, and how that's being used within our system. And that's going to be a work in progress. There are counties that are working on that right now. My other big focus is doing a good job of trying to get the best quote for insurance on all fronts, health insurance, liability insurance, general liability insurance, and risk mitigation aspects. So any questions for me on what I reported? All right, seeing none, we will turn it over to Commissioner Corn.
So I was down in Boise last week as well at the IAC Midwinter Training Conference. A couple of the classes that I had were very informing, natural resources, and another one on rights of ways, which I hope will help me in my quest to help open up public roads on our public lands. Couple announcements, the Veterans Affairs Office is closed today due to training. And 7B Care Clinic and Life Choices is happening in open house this February 26th at 6:00 p.m. And they're also looking for male mentors. That concludes my report.
I have to jump back in. I forgot to say, I will be meeting with the community on the comprehensive plan. I got a lot of requests from that. I'm starting with, when he said 7B, it just, I forgot I'm starting with 7B. So 7B is the one I'm starting with on the comprehensive plan.
Question here?
Or me?
Oh, always.
A clarification.
I'm sorry, he, he sometimes doesn't say questions, that's why I didn't call on anybody. So are you going to accept questions from the?
No, I was just going to joke. You could use AI to help formulate the AI policy. You would actually do a good job.
Maybe.
All right. With that, we'll go on to public comment. And nobody signed up in this room.
I guess we're done?
What?
I know I didn't sign up. Fred Arnn, still happily a Bonner County resident.
We are trying. Mr. Arnn.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I've looked, I can't find it, perhaps you guys can guide me. I, I'm looking for the Bonner County for employees standards, for employees professional standards, moral standards, and the consequences of breaking those rules. Do they exist? I mean, is there someplace where I can find them?
You can go under human resources.
Did you get approval for that question?
Pardon me?
What is your specific, like, can you give me, you want a?
Well, if we have an employee that commits a crime, do they get fired? If, if we have, if, if we have an employee who shows up drunk.
It's him.
May I?
He's yours, constituent, I'm quiet.
Mr. Arnn, I suggest starting on the Bonner County website, the Human Resources page. At the bottom of the page, there's Bonner County Personnel Policy Manual. So if, if you find that there's something that's not in compliance with that, then I think that would be something that should be actionable, we could look into.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Is he going to give us a clue of which one of us it is, or? Now it's just, it's like being sent to your room. Chief Armstrong is behind you.
Good morning, Jeff Armstrong, Bonner County resident and fire chief for a couple of fire districts around here. So Jeremy Guerin came in a couple of meetings ago, made some comments about water, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to kind of say my piece on it. I don't know if he was coming in as a planning developer, or if he was coming in as a mayor of Sandpoint, but, you know, the fire service is a very small part of this. My job is to ensure that all requirements of fire code is met, and one of those, one of those components is the fire flow. We don't move forward the project unless they can show us the fire flow is required. And I know the county hasn't adopted that, but the state has adopted the fire code, and that is my guide and what I go to. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand that I take that seriously. We're really good at developing in Bonner County, and we're really good at protecting property rights, and I love that. I moved to Idaho for a reason, for what it had to offer here. But we're not very good at addressing public safety and the infrastructure that's needed for it. And I'm not saying that we're there yet, but, but we're going to be there pretty soon. And I don't want to reach a point where California's reading about North Idaho in the newspaper or watching us on TV, because it's coming. If we've got a couple more wild winters, we're going to have some challenging fire seasons. Related to that closely, in the near future, I'm looking to put together a task force on home fire insurance. That industry is changing. It's going to be changing even after the Southern California fires. You may think, well, it's a different company, I have Farm Bureau, whatever. The reality is that the requirements are going to be changing, and I predict that in a couple of years, it's going to be tougher and tougher and tougher to get homeowners' insurance. Or we're going to have to take some definitive steps to protect our residents here in town. So, in the county, I'm sorry, not in town. So I want to start those conversations. What can we do? So I'm looking for people from all walks of life. I would love to have somebody from the insurance industry come in and tell me that I'm crazy and this isn't going to be a problem, and then we can have one meeting and share some coffee and move on. But I don't think we're going to be there. So next week, I'll be at the Western Fire Chiefs Conference in Las Vegas. I know, really horrible destination. There's going to be a topic, and actually, a bunch of fire chiefs from around the nation are going to be talking about this. What can we do to bring back to our communities? Something that I've been talking about for about six months, and then obviously, the fires in California really elevated those conversations. So I'm announcing it to you, but I'm also announcing it to everybody that's listening. If you're interested, reach out to me directly. Everybody knows how to get ahold of me.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When you're looking at addressing homeowners' insurance, one of the sticking points for those that live without electricity to heat, like non-electric heat, is insurance. In Idaho, we don't have enough carriers that will accept pellet stoves as your form of heat, so they won't insure for fire. And Montana actually has a lot more insurance companies. The sticking point in Idaho is you have to be in Idaho to write insurance for it, and we don't have enough that will address alternative heat sources. So it leaves a lot of the rural areas that don't use, with the thermostat that controls your heat is, disqualifies you, and they don't allow the workaround. So, but if you're looking for an insurance person, I can find an insurance person for you.
That'd be great. I was just going to go cold knock on Farm Bureau, because just dealing with folks, I see that a lot of people use them. You bring up a really good point, and I think we have to start with the conversations. We have to start saying, this is going to affect the insurance eventually. Initially, it's going to affect the homeowners, right? And not everybody can pay cash for their home. So you have to have a mortgage, which requires you to have insurance. For the folks that are way out and off-grid, they might be in some unique situations, but I've seen a lot of pellet stoves since being here, and I haven't really understood that was a problem. I'm glad to know that's a problem. Now we start having conversations with the insurance companies to say, what do you require from this pellet stove so that you will insure it? Maybe we have to do some sort of UL testing, maybe it has to be redesigned, maybe it has to be professionally installed. There's, there's, there's a pathway forward, but we have to have those conversations. Because ultimately, the insurance company is going to be affected if everybody just cancels their insurance, right? So I mean, it's, it's a trickle-down effect.
And in Idaho, State Farm is the only one that will do a pellet stove that would, every other insurance company won't insure. And so if you don't, if you have a mortgage, you don't, you have a problem.
And my question would be why? Because we have far less problems with pellet stoves than we have with wood stoves. And the, and the key is maintenance, right?
Well, get on that call with Progressive to me, because they're not budging.
Every year, with your renewal, you have to submit proof that you had your chimney professionally cleaned.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that would be an easy requirement, right? Yes, we would like to get up there and do it ourselves and save $500, but the reality is, that's what these chimneys fires that I'm going on is, yeah, I was told that it was done before I bought the house.
Yeah.
Doesn't work, so, thank you for your.
Chief, may I?
Absolutely.
Ask you a quick question?
Sorry, I was just trying to get out of your hair.
No, I appreciate it. I just want to follow up.
You can't give that kind of statement walk away.
During my comments, I mentioned that one of the members of the public has been in contact with me about wildfire prevention. Just wanted to ask if, if your jurisdiction, if you guys have any education programs that you work with right now that we might be able to try to help reinforce? Just wanting to honor that request, because I share the concern that the, the members of the public have raised about that. So if we can find a way to work together to improve awareness and help people just better understand how we can be more responsible to help reduce those risks of creating wildfire, if there's any types of programs or things that you guys are currently doing that we can jump into and assist with, or if we can create something, love to find out more about that.
So there's really four partners in this. So Bonfire, Bonner County Emergency Management, IDL, and the local fire departments, right? So we, we continually talk, we actually share resources, materials, and I say, when I say resources, it's handouts. One of the things I just came across about a week ago was where local government, I refer to myself as local government because I'm not state, local government agencies can actually apply for grants and actually have people come in and do clearing and shipping. I know Bonfire does it as well.
Right.
The more money we can bring here, grant money that we can bring here to actually affect that stuff. It's important, it's important. It's important for people to understand that it starts with defensible space.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I, I should have been more specific, not about defensible space around the home, but just awareness in general, right? We, we spend a lot of time outdoors in this county, which is a wonderful thing. But the more time we spend in the wildlands, the more potential there is to create a wildfire due to adherence and activities. And so it was an education, not for home defense.
Okay.
Against risk of fire, but more about the idea of just being a responsible citizen when we're out and about. So I wasn't clear about that, so I apologize. But that, that's the topic that was presented to me, and I think it's one of value if we can continue to educate the public further on how we can be responsible when we're outdoors.
Responsible recreating, yeah, absolutely. And I think it starts with a 40,000-foot view of the county and where are our problem areas. You know, the Sagal Bike Park was an example. I, I know that no one was interested in that, nobody had any opinions. But those folks had reached out and actually put together a fire prevention plan, and I looked at it, Brian Hicks from IDL looked at it. And, and I had no opinion one way or the other on the bike park, but I did have an opinion on keeping folks that were there safe, especially when you start talking about one way in, one way out. The Sagal Peninsula is an example of one way in, one way out. So.
When you're talking about insurance, the comments about the defensible space understanding is actually a need to educate the community, especially as we get new people moving in, because that is the argument that insurance is using when you talk about impacting insurance. So one of the things in spirit, so I'm in LD2, so I'm Spirit Lake. At a time, Chief Carpenter would actually volunteer to come out and help people understand what defensible space was. And the more people that move in understanding that when you're trying to get insured, those type of metrics are what we need to check off is part of the education tool. And a lot of people don't, I mean, I'm not going to, I didn't abide by defensible space because you're just, we're going to burn down anyhow, kind of a feeling. Has been kind of a lot of North Idaho in the rule. But in order to change what you're, that metric of insurability, we have to change our view of defensible space of the homes themselves, so.
One last selfless plug, if I may. We have a lot of resources on our website, our new website, selkirkfire.us, check it out, under Resources, there's some stuff on IDL, there's defensible space material that's up there. I'm just a phone call away. I don't mind coming out and helping folks with that, but folks up here are private and fiercely independent, so I'm respectful of that. But I certainly would be happy to come up there and take a look at it. When we look at contracts for fire protection or outside of our fire district, the Chaval Wui checklist, Wildland Urban Interface Checklist, we go through, we check the boxes. It doesn't mean that I'm not going to sign the contract and provide protection for those folks. It just means, here's a list of recommendations, this is what really helps. Close with a fun fact. Defensible space started to keep a structure fire from going into the wildland. A lot of, we, we now spin it to people and try to get them to do it to protect their home because it works both ways, but it really started from this structure fire won't spread into the forest.
Before you leave, can you give an update on your crews in California, please?
Oh, they're back.
Yeah, how did it go?
Uh. As you would expect, anytime you put people, four people, in a cab of a fire engine for 18 days, there was some spirited discussion.
But nobody.
There were some calls home to dad, me. I'm going to kill this person, not really. It, it was, a couple of the crew members had never deployed before, so it was new for them. Our, our lead, our captain, Hanson, went out, she's been out a lot. It was a phenomenal experience, they had a lot of good time, they got a lot of good experience. They didn't see a ton of active fire, but they were doing very important work. They were behind the scenes, mopping up and making sure that, you know, because what happens is a couple of days later, a foundation that's smoldering will spark up and the wind will carry that, and that will carry it into the green, and then you'll have a problem. So they were doing a lot of that. They came back with smiles on their face, and, you know, I know a lot of folks in town have asked me, why are we doing that? Why are we helping them? Well, yes, it's the right thing to do, but there's also a revenue component to that, and it comes in, and we're able to allocate that money towards apparatus repairs. So we do get paid for it, personnel time, time and a half, backfill, and we get paid for our fire engines, so.
And I wanted to make sure you got to say that because we're running levies. And so, but the other thing is, being able to deploy on something like that, it's an opportunity to increase the training and education that you don't, you want. It helps us for if, God forbid, it happens here, they will have already been deployed on such, so they've got that behind their belt. So thank you for sending them and that they came back safe, so.
And even as your fire chief, I'm on a team and I deploy and I'm active, it's one of the things I have in my contract agreement, that I get to go out in the summer and do that, and it's for the experience. Yes, it's fun, yes, I enjoy it, but it adds slides to my slide tray because there may be any time where I may be out in Sagal or in the Northside District running one of these incidents, and that experience that I've picked up is going to help me doing that, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Jennifer.
Sorry, I didn't take your time.
No, no, I have all her time. Okay, Jennifer Arnn, Bonner County resident. And I want to bring to our good citizens' attention that Idaho House Bill 101, preserving public access, is now in the House Transportation and Defense Committee, and it's spearheaded by our District One Representative Cornell Razor. And yes, this is a revival of Senate Bill 1258 that Senator Scott Herndon sponsored last year. And the purpose of this bill is to prevent further loss of public access to our publicly-owned federal and state lands and waters, and would prevent, like what happened at Camp Bay, from happening anywhere else in Idaho. So right now, it's headed to the committee in the House, and what people can do is write to the House members of the Transportation and Defense Committee who are going to hear it. And then after, hopefully, it will pass there and go to the floor, and then you can write to all of the House members. But its opposition, surprisingly enough, is from some of our southern rural counties who are kind of against public access because they have too much, which I think is really interesting. I had some long talks with, with Commissioner from Oahu County, and they have over 80% of their massive area, over 7,000 square miles of land, is BLM property and lots of bad actors from outside because, as you know, Idaho's population is exploding and will continue, especially after what's happened in LA. I think it's going to make what happened these last few decades look like, you know, times change compared to what's coming. And they have bad actors coming in and using the public lands, and then they're stuck with the bill, so they would just assume, you know, cut it out. In fact, she said that she wanted to put toll, tolls on all of the bridges that cross.
They repeated that at our conference.
Did they, did, oh, so you heard that? So she's been very active and they're, okay, so you, so you met?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, well, anyway, you know, that's well and good, but I don't think this bill can't, fighting this bill is going to solve the problem of bad actors. I mean, you know, why punish the good people? This is our land, we should be able to get to it. And this is gonna, and you know, 10, 20 years, Oahu County is going to be dealing with the same thing that we're having. I mean, she's confident that she's got a great planning department, and they've got their great zoning, and it can't happen here, but it will happen there. And this is something that, that will help emphasize that public access is public interest. So I really, really hope people support this.
It's a great time to do a plug of elected people are asking for people to read bills, and there's, I, there's an opportunity to call them and research Idaho sessions and see what bills are there, and read it, especially the very, very long ones, and give them some input.
This one's not very long.
No, I mean.
It just helps to find public interest. Right now, public interest is, I can say that if I write it down, saying that I've made this decision because it saves the taxpayers 50 cents, that by Idaho law, it's a completely discretionary measure, that, that could go. And by, by that standard, let's get rid of all of our government, think how much money we'd save, all of our roads, all of our infrastructure. So I think this is really important.
All right, you're welcome. Any other public comment? All right.